Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, October 12, 2017. The time is 6:00 p.m. We'll begin tonight with roll call.
Good evening. Commissioners Skaggs.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Womack.
Present.
Bulkaus.
Present.
Talon.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Ponstein.
Here.
Commissioner Steck. Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioners Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Vonk. Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We loan Commissioner Voorhees for invocation and to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. If I could take the liberty before I invokeate, that we all might tonight just take a few moments to think of and remember the many of our U.S. citizens who are suffering because of water, wind, fire, and shooter. There are many people in our nation hurting tonight. And so I was brought up that once you've been on your for that, then you stand up, you put your hand in your pocket and see what you've got to help, what resources you can give to help alleviate the pain and the suffering that many are going through. So tonight, let's take a little time to think of those who are suffering and asking that they may find peace in the midst of their problem, they may find healing, and let's ask for that. Let's have a few moments of silence, please. Great Creator, the giver of every good and pretty gift, we come tonight thankful that we can come together as a government in peace, as an opportunity to serve one another, as you have laid out what is best, that we would lay down our lives for one another. We're thankful that tonight we lay down some time here at the County Commission to work on the projects and the process of serving one another. We're thankful for those who lay down their lives, our emergency safety people, and those who serve in very difficult positions and places. And we ask for your guidance and protection over them. So we ask that you will be with our deliberations in all ways. May we respect each other. May we respect the opportunity that is before us, and may we ever be thankful for our opportunities of good health and public service. In Christ's name we have. Amen.
Amen.
Let us say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. We will then move to Agenda Item 5. We have one special order of business tonight, and that will be Kristin Peck from the West Michigan Partnership for Children, and Matthew Van Zetten will be introducing.
Thanks a lot so much, Commissioners, for having us tonight. We're really excited to do this special order of business because three years ago, on this very evening, I talked to you after briefing the State House and Senate Appropriations Committee about this pilot that we had been able to put together. And so tonight, we're actually able to come show you that it's live. It started on October 1st. And so we're going to provide you an overview of that. I think it's important to note, though, that this pilot has strong support from our court and our judges, strong support from Network 180, strong support from the community foundations that have supported this, a number of them, and from the Department of Health and Human Services. So we have found a point where everyone is aligned and ready to work. But it's also important, I think, for you to hear that your leadership's been really important in this. Over the past 20 years, you've given the family and children's coordinating an ability to grow and thrive. You've given staff time to talk about how do we improve systems, also to do research, find best practices, and then convening stakeholders to find out how do we come around common goals of improving performance. You also, about 20 years, or in the early 2000s, under then-Chair Heacock, created a prevention subcommittee that did a lot of work to talk about how do we get in front of problems in our community. And then you fund throughout the recession and over time, and you've continued to fund that. Unlike many local units of government that pulled back human services dollars during the recession, you were able to keep dollars out in front. So I really think that you two deserve some credit to getting us to this point. So thank you very much. What we're going to talk about in the context for this is a few key moments that got us here. One was in 2005. This county board had to make a supplemental appropriation to the child welfare services. That really created a deep dive by the county board and staff to start looking at, like, how does this system get funded? And around that next year, Children's Rights, advocacy firm from the state of New York, sued the state of Michigan in federal court, saying that our system here in Michigan, our child welfare system, was not meeting the needs of children. Due to our extensive research that we had done the previous year, we decided this was going to cost our state a lot of money and cost Kent County a lot of money. But yet, we weren't facing the same dilemmas as other counties and children across the state. So we actually ended up suing the state of Michigan for a headly violation. Many of you were on the board then, and some of you weren't. We ended up losing because it was a federal consent decree. But we recognized that this was going to be a significant cost. Today, private agencies receive over $45 a day to service a K. When I started, we started it with $17. So as you can see, that has grown significantly. Fortunately, because we had this information, and Senator McGregor was able to work with us, we were able to figure out how to get the Section 515 legislation into the child welfare appropriations bills. We also received a $6 million grant from SAMSA to help start integrating juvenile justice, child welfare, mental health services. And so with all of that, started working with the department and our advocacy, and started to have lots of conversations about how do we improve services? Let's stop talking about who pays for things, and let's start talking about how do we improve services? And through that, we were able to create this pilot. And three years ago, it got approved by the State House, the State Senate, it got put into the -- the governor signed it, and so here we are today. And we are ready to share about the changes actually that are now live in our county, live in our community, to better serve children and families. With that, I'd like to introduce Kristin Peck. She's the first CEO of the West Michigan Partnership for Children, and she can talk to you about the pilot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Matthew, for the introduction, and thank you, Commissioners, for the invitation to speak tonight. I'm excited to be here to celebrate the launch of West Michigan for Children. I know for all of you, it's been a long time coming. For me, it's been six months. And in that short time, we have built a team of 14. We furnished an office. We've entered into contracts with more than 40 foster care, residential, and other service providers. We've developed policies and procedures and training for our partners. And this has all culminated in the transfer of 800 children who are in foster care in Kent County from DHHS to WMPC on October 1st. And that would have not been possible without the support of everyone in this room. So I am very grateful for that, as are my colleagues who are here with me. Sonia Norman and Steve Edison are COO and CFO. So now that Matthew has given a little bit of history on how we got to where we are today, I'm going to share with you how we intend to accomplish our goals. And what we all vision is that Kent County is a resilient community, where children and families -- and WMPC intends to empower communities impacted by our services. And we plan to do this through an innovative and collaborative approach to help us get there. We believe the best solutions lie within those we serve, and so we aim to work with the families we're serving to look at root causes that are leading to the removal of their children, and to do more to address those circumstances that lead to removal in a more timely way. We intend to build the capacity of relative caregivers so that more children return home, and the capacity of foster parents so they can care for children in the meantime. We intend to reduce the reliance of residential placements by looking at those kids that we are unable to place in family placements, and building the capacity of foster parents to meet the needs of those children. And we aim to do this through a performance-based funding pilot, which through a contract with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, we will leverage the expertise and talents of a collaborative consortium to help build the foster care workforce, to improve outcomes for children and families. And with this pilot, payments to private foster care agencies will be based on their ability to meet positive outcomes for children and families. And that includes finding permanent homes more quickly and keeping children safe. We will engage in continuous quality improvement, and we will use data to tell us what's working and what's not, and allow us to be more proactive in developing solutions. We case rate incentivizes permanency. We will have more funding at the front end of cases, and that will help us address the needs of children and families, and provide foster parents with supports they need to take care of children in the meantime. And as you know, WMPC is the culmination of a long time and statewide effort to improve outcomes for children and families, and it demonstrates the best in private-public partnership. We are working hand-in-hand with the private foster care agencies here in Kent County, Bethany Christian Services, Catholic Charities West Michigan, Dave Lachance, Samaritas, and Wellspring Lutheran Services. And we're also working in partnership with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in Lansing and their local office here in Kent County. We're working closely with Sevita Selden Johnson, who's been really crucial in helping lead this effort. So this new model will allow us to be innovative in creating services that meets the needs of children and families. It's outcome-based rather than process-based, and we will be entering into performance-based contracts with our partners and evaluating them on their ability to meet the needs of children. This is a little bit more of our funding model. This was developed by Public Consulting Group, hired by DHHS to oversee the statewide initiative towards performance-based contracting, and along with an actuarial firm, Lewis &amp; Ellis. And to create this rate, they looked at reflective data of actual cases served in foster care in Kent County over a seven-year period. And they determined the average cost of cases, as well as the average service period. And so they determined that it's been taking two and a half years for children to exit foster care on average and go into permanent homes. And so that's something we intend to impact. And so now, rather than be paid the same amount every day a child's in care, our funding will be front-loaded. We'll be receiving approximately 60% within the first year the child's in care, and that will dramatically decrease the second and third years a child isn't care. And this will incentivize moving kids more quickly into permanent settings, whether they be with their parents, or family members, or into adoptive placements. Any savings we have, we will use to reinvest in the system. This flexibility really allows us, the creativity, to look at new models, new ways of doing things, and really be problem solvers to help address the needs that are leading to removal. We have a care coordination team, and our care coordination team will help build the capacity of the foster care workforce and serving children and families. They'll be providing case consultations to our partners. They'll be looking at things like caseworker retention and coming up with ideas on how to impact retention, because we know that if children have stable caseworkers, that yields to better outcomes. They will be knowledgeable of current research and evidence-based practices. They will communicate those evidence-based practices to our partners. And they will also be looking at trends and looking to eliminate barriers to services. We have a performance and quality improvement team that will be data to work with our partner agencies on a regular basis, to look at case trends and which cases are high-risk, and how we can better infuse supports into those cases to lead them towards permanency more quickly. And they'll also be looking at agencies' performance outcomes and meeting with our partners on a regular basis to flag areas where they're projected to be underperforming and help them strategize with solutions to improve. Say a little bit about MindShare. Through a generous grant from the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, we have purchased a new software. It allows us to do predictive analytics. And so what that means is it will, through time, using the data that we have in the system, come up with variables that will help us understand better what leads to success in a case and what might lead to a breakdown. That will allow us to, in more real-time, be proactive, solution-oriented, and work with our partners. So with that, I will conclude my end of the presentation, but open it up for questions from all of you.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. Are there questions among the Commissioners? Commissioner Melton.
Good evening, Chair. I have a question, actually it's more of a statement question. Number one, thank you for your work, very much so. Are you familiar with the Closet of Hope?
Yes, I am.
It's a woman from -- maybe you can explain it better? Or she fostered children at one point. She had two sets of twins under the age of five in her home, along with her own kids under the age of five. I don't know how she did it. And realized that there were supplies that she didn't have or things she needed. And she started this closet. I think they're growing to their second one now, or they just enlarged? I don't remember which. But I didn't know if you were familiar with that or not.
Thank you. And I think that that's exactly the type of partnerships that we want to build and create. If they don't already exist, or if they do, make sure that we're utilizing them. Closet of Hope has, if you haven't been there, it's pretty incredible. They have -- it's like going to a store, where they have all of the items that they've received that have been donated categorized into aisles and sections. And so it's really to help support foster parents within additional resources that are taking children to their homes.
And they also do meals, because I know she's asked me, can you take, I don't know, 50 pounds of turkey and do something with it? Sure. Anyway, thank you. And I just made a name, Steve, it's Montgomery. Anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Just that question about your funding model for, it looks like it's front-loaded, that you discussed. Is there any concerns about incentive for foster parents that second year with the money amount going down? Not that people should be in it for the money, but that kind of is a red flag to me a little bit, because I'm wondering what that first-year money's supposed to be used for, and why is this the second?
That is a great question, and that helps me clarify that funding model presentation. It may have been oversimplified. The foster parents will receive the same rate, so this won't impact the rate that the foster parents receive. What will change is the money that comes to WMPC. And so that will really hold our feet to the fire to make sure we are doing more and in more real-time and proactively to help move children to more permanent homes more quickly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. On the slide, you mentioned that you're going to be transparent and sharing performance outcomes. Can you talk a little bit more about that and where Commissioners and the community can be able to find that?
That's a great question. So we right now are working on building out our dashboards in MindShare, which is the software we're using. We have seen in other states where agencies put their dashboards on their websites, and so that way it's accessible to everybody. We're going through a process where we're validating the data that is being provided to MindShare. We're getting data from the state's child welfare data system. And so we aren't ready to do that yet, because we want to make sure the data that we have is accurate. But when we are confident in that data, we will figure out how to share that information with all of you, whether that is through posting it on our website or through a regular email blast. Anytime you want to ask us questions, we will be transparent and offer that in the meantime.
Do you have any guess when you'll be able to validate that data? I know there's some problems with that system.
Yeah, so that's something we've been working on as a county. We hope to have our dashboards live and ready for use, probably by -- I'm just going to be realistic, probably by the end of the first quarter. So looking at the end of this calendar year, I think would be when we'd start looking at that. Another thing we are doing right now, our dashboards are focused on the areas in our contract with the state, which are key performance indicators. Some of them are passed down by the feds. Some of them came out of the lawsuit that Matthew mentioned. But we are also looking at building additional dashboards so that we can make sure we're really looking at well-being. So we are looking a lot at process outcomes. We want to make sure we're looking at what is the impact of those services we're providing. So we hope to have more robust dashboards and data within this year, as we are able to establish a baseline and see what else we need to be measuring.
Great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the privilege of working for then-Representative McGregor when we started this whole process and that budget. So it's kind of cool to see it kind of come to fruition. Numbers may not know that Kent County is the pilot for the state. And so whatever happens, and whatever outcomes, and whatever dashboards and data that we start to create is going to probably lay the groundwork for the rest of the state. So I am really looking forward to those dashboards, because I had to sit through five-hour meetings for about a year to discuss those. So I hope that next time you come, we can see those and get a little in-depth. Quick question, a couple quick questions. Are we utilizing any type of foster care or parent adaptive parent support services? So we've got the private agencies that kind of do the intake and help find the child's placement. But there used to be a really good program called Parent-to-Parent that was a free mentorship program. Are we utilizing anything like that?
So one of the things that we are able to start looking at now is how can we better support our families and children? We do have some ancillary supportive services in place, namely through Arbor and YWCA. But as we get a better understanding of where our gaps are, we certainly intend to build those relationships with the other community partners so that we can bring those in and better serve our children and families.
I definitely encourage you to really look at that, because I know you're kind of at the agency level right now, but then the level below that is they're trying to find the parents and the families, and they have that support and that recruitment process in place to get good families. So I hope that you will look at that in the future, and anything we can do to support you on that. And then also, as Legislative Chair, if there's anything we can do to continue to help with that daily rate, or things that we can push as a county to kind of help support you, we want to see this succeed. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes, in your vision and mission statement, it says empowering communities to create better futures for children is through innovation and collaboration. And during your presentation, you spoke about some of the added support for the foster parents. I want to ask, is there going to be any emphasis on education within the community that helps to reunite these children with their original families, if there's a chance for that? And I wanted to see if you want to elaborate on that point, that when we're talking about empowering communities, that the parents are part of the community, but the community is much more broader than that. And parents that are losing their children are major stakeholders in this. Some lose them for good reason, but there are others that feel that there should be a better chance for them to try to keep those children in their family. Could you elaborate on how the funds that are being used for this program will help more portions of the community besides just the foster parents?
Absolutely. We know as social workers and child welfare experts that, you know, family reunification is our primary goal. And children, you know, if we're able to strengthen and build capacity of their families, that's really what's ideal for us. And that's what's in their best interest, in the children's best interest. So I think what is really exciting about this pilot is that because we do have that flexibility in funding, and it is front-loaded, that's really what our first permanency option is, is to look at while the child is safe in foster care, look at what are the root causes that led to that child's removal, and how can we be good problem solvers and help the families address them with the ultimate goal of returning children more quickly back home? And if that's not possible, what can we do to better look at the family system? And is there another relative that maybe with some more support that we could -- that relative could be a guardian for the child? And then we'd still have that family connection? So that's certainly something that's a primary importance to us. I hope in future meetings, I can tell you more of how and what we're finding is working. But, you know, we really aim to return more children back home. And as you mentioned, if it's a issue where there's food scarcity, or poverty, or underemployment, if we can really help build the capacity of that family so they can address those situations and move children home more quickly, that would be ideal.
Thank you very much. When it comes to your outcomes and collecting data, assessing that data, will your community partners, will they take on more of a workload? Or will some of these funds increase new hires within some of these community partners? Basically, my question. Or will they be taking on more workload?
So I think their work is going to certainly, and it does already look a little different. We have moved more authority in some of the decision-making around services to our partners. And so they have and so they have, hopefully that will make things more efficient for them. It might create more work in terms of authorizing services, but I'm hoping that because they have the authority to do that and autonomy to do that on their own, that will create more efficiencies. Terms of the monitoring and quality assurance piece, we will be, you know, really expecting all of our partners, and I think they already do, to have strong CQI processes already, and so we'll be working in partnership with them to make sure that our CQI processes are in line with theirs. And then, you know, I, one of the things that I've heard often as an issue for our partner agencies is caseworker retention. And we know that we have multiple caseworkers that is certainly not in their best interest. You know, they, kids really do best when they have stable adults in their lives, and so having a stable caseworker is part of that system of support for them. And so that's something that I hope the data will help us learn more about, and what is leading to caseworker retention, and how can we help play a role in really supporting our workforce so that we have a more stable workforce, which will inevitably.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lots of questions tonight, but thank you for your time to be here tonight, and it is, as Vice Chair Volter said, it's neat to see this come to fruition the way it has. We'll look forward to future reports as well, so thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we do have gifts, so we left bags on that table over there, and they include a one-pager as well as some very newly acquired swag with WMPC logo. Thank you.
Okay, we will move then to Agenda Item Six, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak can come forward. You have three minutes. You do need to state your name and your address. Is there any public comments tonight? Come forward, please.
I get pretty squeaky, I'm warning you. My name is Joan Cowell. I live at 247 Mallory Southwest in Wyoming. I am here on behalf of DogOrg, a national nonprofit, regarding a freedom of information request that has been tied up in red tape regarding the death of the three-week-old infant Suzanne Jean-Marie in May in Grand Rapids. One of the dogs was adopted out by the Kent County Animal Shelter. We don't know anything about the other two, and in the interest of saving lives and children and preventing these happening, we would like you to help us expedite getting that transparency and getting the facts out as soon as possible. We know the dog's momma's was adopted out by the Kent County Animal Shelter, and they posted it on their webpage, and the parents that adopted it had a GoFundMe campaign because they could not afford the veterinary care for the dog. On a related note, this weekend, we will have another Empty the Shelter. This is an event that we believe puts gasoline on the problem of overbreeding cats and dogs, because routinely they have a nonprofit come in and get PR, give a coupon, I think Bisel is doing it this time, to people who have not given the time and consideration that is necessary to considering taking in a pet. They all get pets free, and then other pets from other states and agencies quickly refill our shelters, and they see them again. We strongly suggest that this program be stopped and that these funds be instead used to be earmarked to help address the very severe problems with the lack of spay and neutering, and dogs in particular, pit bulls, up to 80% more that are choking our shelters are not spayed and neutered for whatever reasons. Lastly, after this child was attacked, the Grand Rapids Police Department Officer Tieran was on national television, and he gave an opinion instead of facts. We are very concerned, like Mr. Voorhees said, about all individuals and having empathy for these parents and families that go through a lifetime of agony after these attacks. It doesn't go away a week or a month, because we counsel them and support them. There's a wealth of data, there's a wealth of data out there that continues to show, including the latest one, sixteen, been sixteen consecutive dog attacks, that came out with the conclusion that the attacks on children are so much more severe that they recommend that there is virtually no interaction between pit bull dogs and children and infants at all. So I hope you give this serious consideration and release the Freedom of Information Act that we filled out by law so we can keep track of things and try to address this problem.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Any questions?
This is not an opportunity for questions. Please come forward, sir. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Sergio Cirarrias, and my address is 2096 Shiloh Point Drive Southeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm here because on Tuesday I went to the City Commission, and I witnessed a couple of organizations that spoke on behalf of immigrant, people from the MICA Center and people from Home for All. They talked about, they asked the City Commission to adopt the policy requiring their officers to not ask people for their immigration status when providing a service, any government, city employee. I went up there and I suggested that this should also apply to probation officers in the courts, because I, having worked there in the past as a translator and witnessed, read some reports from the probation officers, that they had contacted Immigration to get people deported. And so then the mayor told me that I was at the wrong meeting, that this was the place where I should bring that up, and so I bring it to your attention now for you to consider that. I think this is something that is an important matter. When specific communities are asked for their immigration status based on the color of their skin and the language that they speak, this is a no filing. I think any attorney can tell us that, and I ask you today to consider that as well, county-wide. There's been multiple, I've been in multiple meetings with Chief of Police Rohinsky, and some of them have led to them pointing out that some of the decisions that are made are county-wide, and that it's, has to do with the contract with the jail. And there's been multiple conversations city-wide in Grand Rapids and in other communities about cities that are welcoming to immigrants, but I think it's time, I don't know if anybody has brought it to your attention as the County Commission, that this is something that needs to be addressed county-wide. I know city is, Grand Rapids is an important city in the county, and there's a high concentration of people of color in this city, but I think that there, at least with the Latino community, the Latino community is just the GDP of the Latino community, and Latinos living in the United States is seventh in the world, larger than Canada, larger than Italy. And I think that if West Michigan has a region that's to remain competitive, attracting Latino talent, and also attracting other diverse talent to the region, then I think that we need to be more welcoming to all communities, including when they are receiving services through the courts and through our law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission this evening? I am seeing none, so we will, okay. Please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Watchdog Miller, reporting to the, we got laws, we don't, as our new Attorney General says. We had an election last November, and just look at Mexico's laws. If you're coming up from the south there, Guatemala, and Honduras and so forth, you land two years in jail in Mexico if you're crossing that border unless you bribe the right people. So we have a housing crisis in this town and an employment crisis, and who has to go? There's just, isn't enough resource accommodate all the people who are demanding it. And if they're telling you they're in fear, that's baloney. They're just raising the influence back there out of that so-called community. They refuse to use the word neighborhoods. This, thank you ever so much for scheduling this night meeting. It's not accessible because the mayors, the Rapid mayors kicked out all the local black routes and Catholic routes in 2004. So it would be more accessible if you would hold it down there called Central Station, call it Slumworth Station. Anyway, at the Wega Center or upstairs, above the great, there's a big hall upstairs there, and certainly you could accommodate the crowd which showed up tonight. So black routes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 14 were kicked out, and they don't come, most don't come any farther north than Cherry. And the Catholic routes, and myself, 7, 9, 12, 14, and down in the Granville Hill corridor, the 8, 10, and 16, also don't come any farther north than Cherry. So thank you very much for this exercise in democracy. Two of the Commissioners here, Hennessy and Bolkowski, are really responsible for the fact that they flack, they flack for the Rapid. Bolkowski is a Rapid profiteer. He gets at least 60 grand a year out of the Rapid. He should resign his Rapid job or his position at disability advocates. Carol Hennessy ripped out bus stops up and down bridge streets rather than demanding more police officers, not the whole, hey, other police officers out on bridge. She thought the solution was to rip out.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comments tonight? Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Russell Olmsted. Address is 325 Glen Haven Avenue Northwest, Grand Rapids. Just wanted to lend my voice in support of what Sergio was up here earlier discussing as well, that under the county, looking into whatever policy you can create to protect the safety and security of those community members, county, that may be undocumented but are still citizens and still functioning members of our society. So please look into doing that. I also would like to say that I would encourage the county to have more evening meetings than one a year. It's very difficult for people to make it to county meetings. I've been to the, a few in the morning. It's very hard to make it and adjust people's work schedules to get here at 8:30 in the morning, and, you know, civic discourse and aware of what's happening in county is very, very important. So I hope that you would consider doing that moving forward, or at the very least, looking at getting these meetings up on the Internet, YouTube account, or Facebook Live, or something to where community members around the county can see it, because there's a huge population here. It's very difficult for everybody to get here and actually be aware and have input. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, we do have our meetings up on access Kent website. You do? Okay. Yeah. Any other comment tonight? I see none. So we will move to Item Seven of the agenda, and it is the consent agenda, and for which I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Chair Saulfeld, I would move the consent agenda.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none. It is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Cornike.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Talon. Yes.
Hennessy.
Here, yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breve.
Yes.
Calman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck. Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones. Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vonk. Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 aye, zero nay. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We move to Agenda Item Number Eight, for the first resolution, one of three. I will call on Commissioner Cornike.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would like to move Resolution 77 of today's date, two appointments to the Board of Canvass.
Second. For Commissioner Skaggs, are there questions or comments on this resolution? I do not see any. It is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to the second resolution, for which I will, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move Resolution Number 78 of today's date. It's the authorization of a winter 2017, December 1, 2017, dedicated millage property tax levy from the Board of Commissioners and Fiscal Services.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. As many of you may know, I've had some questions regarding some of the issues and one that's involved in tonight's interaction. Now, I want to thank interim administrator, Wayman, and the Finance Department. We've may have had some meetings, and we are continuing to work together to make sure that these are special millages voted for specific purposes by our constituents and the citizens of Kent County, and we want to make sure we're being as effective and efficient in it. So I'm thankful as we're working together and fully support the move of this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? If you don't see any, this is a roll call vote. So I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolutions Seven Eight, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Cornike.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breve.
Yes.
Calman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck. Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Vonk. Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Seven Eight is adopted.
Thank you. For our final resolution tonight, I will call on Vice Chair Volter.
Mr. Chair, I move for Resolution Nine of today's date.
Support by Commissioner Breve. Questions or comments on this resolution? I do not see any. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move next to Item Nine of the agenda, which is a one-minute public comment. Is there any further public comments? You have one minute.
Thank you, sir, and fellow citizens for hearing out this better. In terms of other liberals undocumented Jabberwockery, why don't all of us start paying our bills on documented dollars? I'm sure you'd be happy to see that here at the county. So it's just all Jabberwocky there, invitation, and again, thank you very much for bringing us out.
Is there any other public comment tonight? I see none, so we will move to Agenda Item Number Ten, reports. Is there any reports by our Commissioners tonight? Richard Howell. Thank you, Chair.
The Grand Rapids DDA met yesterday morning. Not a lot of significant items, a couple of supportive items for planning, one for pedestrian safety downtown, and another support of development of street skate design guidelines for future development downtown. Also wanted you to know that the Grand Rapids DDA received one of the top awards from the International Downtown Association. It was for the Equity Driven Growth Agenda. That's part of the GR Forward Plan, pretty prestigious award. What I'm told is that there aren't a lot of cities in this country that are doing this kind of work that's embedded in the GR Forward Plan for downtown, so that was quite a significant event. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Any other reports? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just would like to invite the Commissioners. We're having a dedication of the Gerald R. Ford, President Gerald R. Ford's tribute room at the airport. It's October 7th, I believe, at 10 o'clock. Get the word out to everybody and hope you can show up.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, we do have one. Mr. Call.
Real quickly, the Senior Milage Committee has been meeting this week, myself, Commissioner Hennessy, Matthew Van Zetten, and apparently it's tired Commissioner Steck out so much that.
Real quickly, the Senior Millet Committee has been meeting this week. Myself, Commissioner Hennessy, Matthew Van Zetten, and apparently it's tired Commissioner Steck out so much that he didn't make it tonight. But we should be wrapping that up tomorrow. We're very close to having the final record, and that'll be coming to the Board, I think, in November.
The median age of that committee certainly went down.
Okay. I see no more reports, so I will move to agenda item number eleven, which is miscellaneous, and I will call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I was really honored to be asked to receive an award on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. This is the award right here. It's been in my house for two weeks, I should have brought it down sooner. Pretty proud of it. But we have effectively ended veteran homelessness in Kent County, and we're the only county, I believe, in the state of Michigan that can make that claim, and also about one of forty-some throughout the country. So it's been a collaborative effort with community rebuilders and a lot of other agencies. A lot of work went into this, and I'm just proud to accept it on behalf of our Board.
That is outstanding. And again, thank you for all your work, too. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. In the spirit of taking a moment to emphasize some of the great partners we have, I want to say that I had a chance to meet with the Executive Director of North Kent Connect, and I have some brochures I'll leave on our back table, but just to let people know that it's a wonderful organization, and one of the quotes is, "With my job loss and my wife's illness, my life spiraled out of control. North Kent Connect gave us food, prayers, and encouragement. With their guidance, I can get back on my feet." So if you're ever looking for to donate your clothing, handbags, shoes, home essentials, kids' toys, sporting equipment, North Kent Connect accepts all of those, and it is a wonderful place to help those in Kent County get some support and help. And I'm really grateful for partners like this that we have because it does really help our people that we serve and try to assist. So I'll leave this on the back table. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick things related to my job. On Monday evening, we had our annual dinner at Disability Advocates, and we honored John D. and Mary Loakes for their investment in ability throughout the last many decades. And so that was a very fun evening. It was great to honor them and their impact in many big ways. You know, we see their work at Celebration Cinema and including the community in all its dimensions, as well as in many, many quiet ways. Probably check out the video on YouTube if you ever heard of the internet thing. And then the second thing is, I was appointed, or I don't know if appointed is too strong of a word, I'm on the River Corridor Task Force, focusing on, you know, as the river goes through the city of Grand Rapids, and it's, and related to my job at Disability Advocates, so I'm there to look at accessibility. So I'll keep forwarding information to you because, you know, downtown is a very critical asset for our whole community, like the airport, downtown, a lot of the pieces all fit together as people come and visit. And as the river continues to become more accessible for all of us in every sense of that word, it'll be critical for us to be watching, both for some of you communities downstream, as well as some of you folks upstream, that we all want to be in this together.
I think he's talking to me.
Well, both, I see a couple of y'all, upstreams, downstreams. So be careful what you send down to us.
All right. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Talan.
Thank you, Chair. I was able to attend an event last night that was a discussion of an issue, an endeavor called Raise the Age. The county's been involved in that. It's, the idea is to raise the minimum age for sentencing as an adult, for trying as an adult. It's kind of a, I've discovered it's a fairly complex issue, and I know that Michigan Association of Counties oppose the age because of the cost to counties. But it really is a significant thing that we need to take a look at for children, for seventeen-year-olds. I really wish that, you know, Commissioners could get a little more learning about that, a little more discussion, that we could talk about it a little bit more, because I think it's simpler than Matt makes it out to be. It's more than, in my view, more than just a financial issue. And would love to see if there's some way that we, as, could have some discussion of that. Second thing is that I was able to attend the unveiling this afternoon of our new voting equipment, which I'm pretty excited about. We, you know, we talked about it as we approved some of the funding for it, but I was especially impressed and want to share with you that from what I could see, voter information is going to be almost instantly, voter results will be almost instantly accessible online with this equipment. It's pretty cool. It reminds me a lot of what we have in the city of Grand Rapids. It doesn't seem like a lot different, but when, for example, is it okay if I say this?
No, please, by all means, keep talking about hungry.
When the tabulation is done, and it's ready to go, they push a button, and through a cellular phone connection, it goes over to the county and instantly gets posted as precinct results on the internet. So that's going to be pretty cool. I, yeah, I keep going on about that, but I'm excited. Hope you'll look into it some more as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I also want to say I'm very proud of the new voting equipment, and just proud of our county clerk, of course, and our city clerk, and all that they do for elections and the other new improvements that are coming, far as some of our software for our voting and elections, Kent County Child Welfare Reform, journey to today, our journey to today. Glad that the mission statement there is to empower the community to do better by our children in this county. I want to also commend some Grand Rapids Police Officers who are breaking something that in my community is called the Code of Blue. The Code of Blue is basically, no matter what you do as an officer, the other officers are basically told not to snitch, and if someone breaks that Code of Blue, they're looked down upon. Well, some officers witnessed on Eastern Day 28th, an officer pressing a shotgun so hard into the head of an unarmed African-American that it started this African-American to cry. The police were the first to alert the chief and the department that they didn't think this was right, and this guy has been fired. So that was a good thing to see the Code of Blue, because if we're going to ask the community to break this code of calling everyone a snitch that sees a violent crime, we have to be the ones to set the example. So I think GR did a great job. At the same time, after they witnessed what they had saw, people thought that charges would be brought against him. And when it came to the Kent County level, our Kent County Prosecutor did not charge assault charges, and this has enraged some of our community. I think we do have to get to the point where law officials understand there is not immunity from crimes of assault, and I think the quicker we do that, the quicker we will have some better community relations. We are not a Ferguson. We are not one of the places where law enforcement are the worst. This situation that happened was bad. It was not the worst situation, of course, because we are African-Americans who are being shot in other counties. But I do think we need to be proactive when it comes to making sure that people that are abusing their power do see some punishment, or at least see their day in court. But I'm sure the prosecutor has more sides of it than I have, but I'm representing my community, and it is a concern that when you even have officers being witness to what they view as a crime, and an officer not being charged, that it raises eyebrows in the community. But once again, I am proud to be part of Kent County. I believe our county is headed in the right direction, and I am definitely enjoying serving on the Kent County Board of Commissioners that I'm beginning to get to know here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several items, so I'll be quick. First off, I want to welcome all, everyone that normally doesn't come to our commissions. Welcome. Hopefully, we weren't too boring, but thank you for attending. I also want to commend Commissioner Antor for all his work on the veterans' issues. That's awesome. I want to also mention that legislative is starting to do our interviews to fill our subcommittees for boards and commissions. If you have any recommendations, let us know. And lastly, I didn't acknowledge, I meant to Matthew Van Zetten for all of his work. I just, it was so much work to get this going, and I just want all of us to know how important and how hard he has worked on this. And he does it, obviously, because it's his job, but he also does it because he will make a huge impact on kids. So I just want to acknowledge him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have two items, myself. First, you know, I kind of like the evening meetings as well. I always have. I asked Wayman to look into what would be involved with maybe having them on a quarterly basis, so we'll let you know where that goes. The final thing, and I always feel a little awkward doing this because it doesn't feel appropriate here, but for our Open Meetings Act, we do always announce this here, and I would encourage my Democratic counterparts saying, the Kent County GOP is having a caucus meeting, and that will be held Wednesday, November 27th, at 6:00 p.m. It's Wednesday.
Oh, it's, okay.
Yeah. Wednesday, November 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Kent County GOP Headquarters, which is at 725 Lake Michigan Drive Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan. This is an annual caucus meeting that we have. We usually deal with lead issues, and hopefully, my Democrats will announce when they have their meetings and invite us to those as well. So with that, I have no more, and I would call on Commissioner Voorhees for adjournment.
Chair Saulfeld, I'd move that we adjourn to the next meeting Thursday, October 26th, at 8:30 for an official meeting.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, we are adjourned. Let's go.